Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. We're delighted to have all of you this evening. The evening's agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. There will be two opportunities this evening to address the board. Relative to Agenda Items 7.1 through 11.3, please state the Agenda Items you're referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.1. There's a signup sheet located in the table at the back of the room, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. There will also be a timer on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll? Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we have an exciting night ahead of us. So first off, we have district highlights, and I'm going to go ahead and pass it off to Dr. Nancy Nestor Baker and Vaughn Bell.
Thank you, President Davidson. This evening, our first district highlight and resignation, we have with us this evening, State Auditor Keith Faber, who is here to present an award for the district's financial presentation.
Thank you. I'm sorry, close enough. Well, it's my honor to be here as your state auditor. I get the joy of recognizing folks when they do good and frankly arresting sometimes folks when they don't do good. And so in that regard, this is one of those good days, and I think it's important that we do the good days to recognize that most people in government, most people who work hard in government, whether it's your school board who I commend for the public sacrifice and serving, it's a very important role, or your school treasurer who we're here to honor, that most people in government are hardworking, honest, and do the right thing. And this is one of those cases. We're here to recognize and present our Auditor's Award with distinction. Just a little bit of background on this award. As State Auditor, we audit the 6,000 government entities around Ohio that spend tax dollars. I always tell people, I don't audit individuals, I don't audit businesses, and I don't collect taxes. What I do is act as the citizen's watchdog on those tax dollars. So I watch over tax dollars, and we do 4,800 audits a year of people who spend tax dollars. Everybody gets audited if you spend tax dollars either every year or every other year. And we have two awards, and the two awards we give out of the Auditor's Award and the Auditor's Award with Distinction. The Auditor's Award goes to about the top 16% of those 4,800 entities. The Auditor's Award with Distinction, which I'm presenting tonight, is rare. It is so rare, in fact, that out of those 4,800 entities that we audit, less than 3.6% of those entities receive this award. It is even more rare to get this award 10 years in a row. That means your books and records have to be perfect. You can't even have a public record violation, or you won't get the award. And as you'll hear me say, the Auditor's Award and good books and records clearly are a team sport. We're here to recognize Nicole Marshall, your treasurer, and Nicole, if you'd come forward and receive this award, I would also ask, after you received the award, if you'd invite your staff. This is a team sport. You can't have perfect books and records without support from your board, your superintendent, all of your staff, and your entire community. So on behalf of the people of the state of Ohio, on behalf of the State Auditor's Office, Nicole, it is my honor to recognize you as one of Ohio's very finest treasurers for a school district.
Thank you, Auditor Faber, for being here, and thank you to the Board of Education, because without you setting the expectations and setting the example for our district, I don't think this is something that we would be able to accomplish. And also the leadership team, you know, everyone's support, it is a team effort, as Auditor Faber mentioned. But I would like to introduce my staff. They work very hard. Some of them have actually been here the whole 10 years. So we have our Assistant Treasurer Laura Hendricks. Please come on. Come on, okay, we're getting in the picture. So I want to get a group picture with everybody, if that's okay. Dolores Page, she actually just joined us in payroll, but previously accounts payable. Katharina Mead is our Senior Payroll Coordinator. Christina Carney, she's our payroll associate. And we have Adam Ben Tomas, he is our Benefit Coordinator. Leah Sholesi, she's our Fiscal Coordinator. And Meg Patton, she's our Executive Assistant in the Treasurers Office. Also couldn't be here tonight is Gloria Stelzer. So Gloria has been in accounts payable for over 20 years. She's absolutely contributed to this award over the last 10 years, so I just want to congratulate my staff.
Would you like to get a picture with your whole staff?
Yes, I'd like everybody to come up with the board and the auditor, if that's all right, and our big, I got balloons that say 10 over there, so thank you so much.
award. Much, it is greatly appreciated and well-deserved on behalf of Ms. Marshall and her staff. Our next recognition this evening is a recognition of a South Indoor Track and Field Champion in the 60-meter hurdles, and so I want to invite Coach Jimmy Gall to come up and introduce
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening and not to just introduce one outstanding young woman, but both of them this evening. First, I'd like to introduce to you Westerville South Junior Marissa Saunders, who I had the pleasure of presenting to you back in the spring after her state championship in the 100-meter hurdles in the outdoor state meet. After hip surgery 10 days later, she has rehabbed and was in full form this indoor season, followed that state championship outdoors with a state championship in the 60-meter hurdles indoors this past season. That was on Friday, March 4th, 2022, at the state indoor championship meet at Spire. Marissa's time of 8.70 seconds was the fourth fastest performance in the history of the state indoor championship meet, and during the course of the season, she lowered her own school record in the 60-meter hurdles to 8.65 seconds at the Louisville Indoor Games on February 5th, 2022. Marissa is our school record holder in the 60-meter hurdles, the 60-meter dash, the 200-meter dash indoors, and the 100-meter hurdles outdoors. I'd like to present to you our state champion, Marissa Saunders.
Madam President, I have a resolution that was presented to Marissa that I would like to move, to have that resolution adopted by the board, and the resolution reads, "A resolution of commendation for Marissa Saunders, whereas Marissa Saunders, a junior at Westerville South High School and coached by Jimmy Gall, launched a personal best indoor track and field season during the 2021-22 school year, and whereas she lowered her own school record in the 60-meter hurdles to 8.65 seconds at the Louisville Indoor Games on February 5th, 2022, and whereas she followed up her 2021 Division One State Track and Field Championship win in the 100-meter hurdles by placing first in the 60-meter hurdles at the 2022 OAT and CCC Indoor High School State Championship Meet on March 4th at the Spire Institute in Geneva, and whereas her time of 8.7 seconds was the fourth fastest performance in the history of the OAT and CCC State Indoor Championship Meet. Therefore, be it resolved that the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and Superintendent commend Marissa Saunders along with Coach Gall and his assistants for representing our district and community with pride and distinction.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Congratulations to Marissa. Let's recognize her one more time. And at this time, again, Coach Gall, and this time we'll have him introduce Alexis Roberts, who is the South Indoor State Track and Field State Runner-Up in the 60-meter
It is my pleasure to also introduce to you Westerville South sophomore Alexis Roberts, who joined our team and our district this year from Big Walnut. She followed her teammate to the top of the podium in the 60-meter hurdles, finishing second in the state with a new personal best time of 8.97 seconds. Alexis set a personal best of 9.05 seconds in the semifinal round at the state championship meet, and then became the third Wildcat hurdler to break the nine-second barrier in the finals. In addition, Alexis earned a spot on the podium in the long jump, finishing eighth with a jump of 16 feet, four and three-quarter inches. It's my pleasure to introduce to all of you state runner-up in the 60-meter hurdles and
Let's congratulate Alexis on her accomplishments. And last but certainly not least, we also want to recognize at this time Coach Gall for your outstanding work and achievements and working with the track team, so we want to also acknowledge you, so we have a certificate of appreciation for you as well this evening. Congratulations, Coach. And now, Dr. Nancy Nestor Baker.
I'd like to call up Coach David Grant.
Ms. McGeorge.
Oh, Ms. McGeorge, please come as well. Now, before you introduce Connor, I would like to move the following resolution. This is a resolution of commendation for Connor Uten. Whereas Connor Uten, a senior at Westerville North High School and coached by David Grant, capped off his high school wrestling career during the 2021-22 school year, and whereas he entered the season having won the 145-pound state wrestling title in 2021, and whereas he finished the season with a 37-2 record and a 134-12 in his career. And whereas he helped lead his team to a fourth consecutive OCC championship and his third consecutive OCC title. And whereas he qualified to compete in the state wrestling tournament for the fourth consecutive year. And whereas on March 13, during the tournament, he defeated Miami's Burgs Fletcher Rose 19-4 in the first round. In the quarterfinal, pinned Illyria's Eric Trinsky in 3 minutes 23 seconds. In the semifinal, defeated Lebanon's Luke Marsh 24-9 and pinned his opponent from Lakewood St. Edwards in the final match in 98 seconds to win the 157-pound Division One Ohio High School Athletic Association's State Wrestling Tournament at Ohio State University. And whereas he was named the Ohio High School Wrestling Coaches Association's Outstanding Wrestler of the Division One State Tournament. Therefore, be it resolved that the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and Superintendent commend Connor Uten along with Coach Grant and his assistants for an impressive season, and thank him for representing our district and community with pride and distinction. The resolution is dated April 11th, 2022.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Coach Grant, I'd like you to introduce Connor, if you would.
Ms. McGeorge is going to do it.
Is she going to, you're just turning the whole thing over to you?
He's just going to stand there, yeah.
Mrs. McGeorge, would you introduce Connor?
Yeah, Connor, come on up. So members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall, it is my pleasure on behalf of Westerville North's administrative team tonight to recognize one of our senior warriors. As you already heard, Connor has won the state championship not once, but twice this year in the 157-pound weight class. Connor has achieved more than any other wrestler previous at Westerville North and maybe Westerville City Schools. I'm not sure on that, but Westerville North for sure, because he is a four-time state, four-time district tournament champion, a four-time state qualifier, and a two-time, would have been three if we didn't have that darn COVID, state champion, in my opinion. Not only is he an outstanding wrestler, but he is also a scholar athlete and one of the most charismatic and influential leaders we have ever had in our program. And as you know, we've had a great wrestling program for many years, so that says a lot. Next year, he will continue his wrestling and academic career at Iowa State, and I also want to recognize that he is here not just because of his ability and his conditions and commitment to the sport, but also because of his parents' support and because of our amazing wrestling staff as well. So please join me in congratulating Connor.
Congratulations to you, and I also want to thank and congratulate Coach David Grant, who cannot get out of being applauded, no matter how much he tried. I think those kind of achievements need another round of applause. Now I would like to call up Kathy Ryan from the Zonta Clubs, who is going to talk about and introduce this year's outstanding young woman.
Good evening. It's a real honor to be here addressing the school board and all of the audience and recognizing one of your outstanding young women students from Westerville North. Her name is Maya Schaffet. Maya, you want to come on up? I'm here on behalf of our Zonta Club of Columbus, which is a service organization, and we work to serve women and children in the greater Columbus area, advocacy, hands-on service, education, really trying to improve the lives of women and children. One of our favorite projects is our Outstanding Young Women's Program. Each year, we invite each high school in the greater Franklin County area to nominate one woman from the senior class who they believe represents leadership, scholarship, and contribution to the school and and contribution to the school and community. This year, we had over 50 applicants. What we do then is have a, usually have a leadership forum in person, but this year, of course, we had to do it virtually, and we had a great turnout for our forum. And then, later after that, we look through all the application materials and choose 12 women that we recognize as outstanding in the city. Maya is one of these 12 outstanding young women. I'd like to tell you just a little bit about her. And again, it was very hard to select this year because there were so many well-qualified women. Maya is a senior at Westerville North High School. She plans to pursue film and media studies in college, and from there establish her own film studio that specializes in Christian and Black empowerment films to positively impact the world. Of course, Maya excels academically. She is a member of the National Honor Society. She performs in the concert choir, has directed her school's Black History Month event, is an active tutor, an OCC scholar athlete, active in the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. And it goes on. Maya created a social media ministry for Christian teens, which she then developed into a hands-on community service project, and she leads the International Fellowship of Faith Ministries Youth Program at her church. From some of her application materials, we find this statement, "Passion, determination, leadership, and activism drive Maya to want to contribute, continue to speak up for those whose voices often go unheard." It is a true honor to be here this evening and to honor Maya Chaffin.
And thanks to Zonta Club.
Okay, moving on to 4.1, approve the minutes of the regular session of the Board of Education held on Monday, March 14th, work session held on Monday, March 21st, 2022, and a special session held on Friday, March 25th, 2022, as presented. May I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions or comments with any of these minute meetings? Nope? Ms. Marshall?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Up next, 5.1, we have an equity update, and I would like to invite Cynthia DeVice.
Thank you to the Board President, Mrs. Davidson, to the board, to the entire board, to the Treasurer, Ms. Marshall, and Dr. Kellogg. So, thank you for inviting us to give an update on educational equity. Myself, Cynthia DeVice, and Ms. Matrissa Reeves are here to present today. So, yeah, I guess I have the control of here, so here we go. I'm not sure where I'm, okay. So, today, we're going to share a little bit about our department, educational equity, as well as our building equity teams and our district equity team. And at the end, we'll have some time for questions as well. Educational equity, the vision of the department is, as you see in front of you, educational equity exists for each student when gender, race, ethnicity, language, disability, family background, and/or income are not, I mean, no longer obstacles to accessing educational opportunities. The purpose of educational equity, as well as the purpose of our building and equity teams, is to provide guidance and support for the superintendent and the board in regards to ensuring all students have equitable access to educational opportunities consistent with our policies for non-discrimination and access to equity educational opportunities. So, as I mentioned, we have two different teams. We have a building equity team, and then we also have district equity teams. And a lot of people in our community, as well as teachers, our staff members, are very familiar with our building equity teams and our district equity teams because they've been around for a while. But I do want to give you just a little bit of information in regards to what we're doing in those particular teams. So, the goal of the teams are basically to review building policies, practices, and data related to the 10 key equity targets. The equity targets were established in 2020 by a committee that was requested by Dr. Kellogg during 2020, when we had the racial unrest in our world, and he asked if we can gather some of our educators together, and we met in regards to creating what would be some recommendations and some action steps for our district continue in regards to our racial equity work that we're doing in our, in our district. Those key targets, you have access to those. I believe we have gone over them before, but they're also on our website as well. It's very important for our building equity team. So, the way the equity teams are designed is there are teachers, school counselors, there are special ed teachers, there are administrators, as well as parents and community members who are on building equity teams. Building equity teams exist in each one of our buildings across the district, so everyone has a building equity team in our district here. The team thinks about what are some of the high-level priorities in regards to what are some of the equity targets. So, they get together and they think about what are equity targets in our district, and how can we make these things, we realize these equity targets in our work in our buildings. So, last year, everyone had the opportunity to create a building equity plan. So, there are two-year building equity plans. So, this is year one of actualization of those equity plans. Building equity goals, we're in year one of those goals. So, what that would look like would be each building created building equity, an equity plan, and there were goals that were included in the plan. So, we, what we did was we divided them up into two years, because this is not a usual normal year, or last two years have not been quite the norm. And so, what we did was we said, let's divide these goals into a year one and a year two. So, this year, we are in the process of completing, we executed the year one goals, and now we are in the completion of the year one goal. And once our, our building equity teams have established their goals, executing those goals, and then they're implementing them, those goals and the way that we're implementing them, we have our checks and balances and accountability, and those goals and what we are doing, the actions, are sent to our district equity team for support and accountability. Okay? So, the district equity team, what we do in our district equity team, and in addition to, or similar to the building equity team, the district team also has teachers, administrators, community members, and parents on the district equity team. Okay? So, both of them, they're, they're different people on each team, but I just want to let you know what each team is made up of. Okay? All right. So, in our district equity team, our goal is to review our district 10 key equity targets. So, we're doing that in our buildings as well as in our district, on our district team. We establish priorities for our district work, and then we execute the work to support our building equity teams. And what that looks like is because our building equity team created the equity plans, those plans are shared with our district equity team, and as a district, our equity team is looking at ways in how we can support the building work around equity. Okay? So, that's our goal and our work in our district team, is to support the work in the buildings. Okay? All right. We update the board and the community on the areas of the work in the district, on our district equity team. We review the BET improvements, their goals, their plans, and their outcome, and then our work is to still support the BET and their two-year building equity plans and goals. So, Matrissa is going to come up and talk a little bit about our building plans.
To the Board of Education, to Ms. Marshall, to Dr. Kellogg, I'm Trissa Reeves, and I am the Educational Equity Specialist for the school district. As Cynthia was speaking, she was talking about the building plans as part of our checks and balances process, that the schools are in the process of reviewing their two-year goals, revising and updating if a shift is needed. The final plans are due to the superintendent on April 29th. There was a midway check-in point back in November, so schools could stay aligned and see how they were doing on those goals. Board members also have access to those goals, and they can see what each school building is doing in our district. The form that the teachers, that the equity facilitators fill out also includes the equity funds and how those were used to achieve those goals. So, there's great accountability, there's also a reason to celebrate as schools reach those goals or realign them. And, that's it, let's see. And the building equity teams are just going to continue to do the work, and we start planning for next year's goals really soon.
I would like to also add that each building has an equity facilitator in each of our building, and that equity facilitator, their role is to lead the work in regards to their equity teams. And they are given an opportunity at every staff meeting to keep our staff up to date on how we are achieving our goals, or if we are kind of behind in any challenges or stumbling blocks, they can work with their staff in regards to that. And so, each building has an equity facilitator, and each equity facilitator is, they're making sure that they're accountable for their budget and also the work that they're doing in their So, in our district equity work, we have divided up in committees. So, there's an Academic Curriculum Materials Committee, a Budget Process Committee, a Family Engagement Work Group, there's our HR and Professional Development, Student Behavior and Discipline, and then Student Well-being. So, those are our work groups from our district equity team. So, I want to give you a little bit of an update about some of the work that we've been doing this year. So, for our Academic and Curriculum Materials Team, their committee group, and the committee group can be made up of teachers, administrators, and parents or community folks. So, they are individuals, so we have our district equity team. I just want to make sure it's all clear, because there's a lot of moving parts here, okay? So, on our district equity team, right, there are work groups, all right? So, these are our work groups, and each work group can have their own committee to begin working on a specific project, okay? Or equity work. So, with the Academic Curriculum Materials Committee, what they decided to do was to, well, let me also kind of go back. So, with our building equity teams, what our building equity teams did was said, these are some things that we needed to work on, right? These are areas that they wanted to work on in their buildings. So, the district equity team decided to support them. And the way that they were supporting them in the academic curriculum materials is our buildings wanted to request more diverse curriculum and materials, and so with doing that, we wanted to make sure that what they were selecting, right, was representative of our students in our community. And so, they created an equity rubric for curriculum and material adoption process. So, the buildings did not have to create the equity rubric, the district equity team did that for them, and then shares, will be sharing that with each building. Okay? All right. So, Family Engagement, what they did was collaborated with the Westerville Public Library to establish and distribute a library card for all of our students. Our HR and Professional Development Team created diversity questions, interview questions that will be used during the process to interview new staff and team members. Team, our HR and Professional Development Team, some of those individuals attended an Ohio Department Education Diversity Lab for hiring diverse educators. So, we had, I think, about three, three principals, in addition to Scott Reeves and myself, who attended the ODE Diversity Lab. The Student Behavior and Discipline Committee, their work was really focusing on the revising the student handbook, discipline data, taking a look at discipline data, and looking at what are some best practices to address some of the discipline disparities that we may see in our district. In addition, we have been working with Mr. McElroy on this SRO Review Committee, and that's led by our Safety and Security Department. Student Well-being, in their efforts, they have been creating recharge rooms in our school buildings, well-being services, and seeing and celebrating students on a regular basis. And in our Budget Work Group, they have established equity funds in each of our buildings. So, every building receives equity funds, which are overseen by our equity facilitator, and they also created a survey that they distributed and collected feedback on how those funds were being used, whether or not buildings needed additional funds, but they really wanted, since this was our first year, to get a handle on what exactly was happening with the equity funds.
Tree?
I think I have the very best slide of all to present now. I'm very excited about all the programs and events that we've had this school year. So, I'll begin with the first one, the Joy and Genius in Multicultural Literature. We invited in Dr. Samantha Stewart from the Ohio State University to come and present to equity facilitators in elementary, in the elementary world. And equity facilitators were invited to invite a teacher, a guest teacher, to come along with them, because we wanted to make sure that everybody knew that equity work is for everyone to participate in. Dr. Stewart presented on how we can engage students in literature, how we can get them excited to read and to write and to talk about literature. Zeta Elliott, also, Dr. Zeta Elliott, also was one of our virtual author visits, and we had over 80 educators and some principals that logged in for that presentation. Dr. Elliott helped us work on using some of the books that were provided by the Westerville Education Foundation through the Many Voices Grant that provides diverse literature for teachers through a grant program. So, between Dr. Stewart and Dr. Elliott, teachers were able to put those books to great use and feel very excited for the literature in their classroom and pass that on to their students. In our middle and high schools, there are student equity groups, and each middle school and high school has a different name for their group. However, this program is made so students can also help buy into the work of equity, do things to help create a sense of belonging within their schools, and develop their leadership skills. And our equity facilitators help lead that action, and so that's, it's pretty amazing to see what these young people think of and what they come up with. Black Girl Joy and Awareness Series, this was actually the brainchild of students, girls, Black and Brown students, responding to what was going on, what is going on, I guess, in our country, and wanting a place to feel empowered and to better understand their place in the world and the gifts that they have to offer to their schools and to their community. So, Dr. Arianna Howard, who also is from the Ohio State University, comes into the various high schools and does a program with the students, and they leave feeling excited and empowered and resilient. And she capitalizes on those character traits that they can bring forth and show up in their school and show up in their family. I had the privilege- I had the privilege of sitting in on a session this morning at Westerville South, and students talked about when they feel so good in their classes, when they feel successful, even when they make mistakes. And so Dr. Howard helped them to put that to, put that to words, and they did a little collective poem at the end. It's a very, very powerful program. I wish I had something like that when I was in school. The Young Men, Motivating and Inspiring Young Men Program is at Westerville North High School, and it is facilitated by Mr. Tim Brown, who is an author. And he, I think the title says it all, what he does there for young men, motivating them and helping them be the best that they can be. We also assisted buildings with speaker engagement. Some schools wanted to have certain speakers in to help them with what diversity and equity looks like in their building, and we helped align them with great speakers to motivate their staffs. And then we are also supporting the Community Read through We Rise. The book is called How the Word Is Passed. And we are having two book chats with educators tomorrow, actually, tomorrow and Wednesday, just to talk about the first chapter of this book. But we're hoping to create quite a buzz around the community supporting reading and literacy and learning about history. The one thing that isn't on there is the African-American Read-In, and the Equity Department helps support that. The African-American Read-In is actually sponsored through the professional organization, the National Council of Teachers of English. It is actually our nation's longest-running Read-In through communities and schools in the United States that features diverse literature. And it's been going on a long time, and this is actually Westerville's third year supporting the African-American Read-In. So the African-American Read-In, I'll leave you with this visual. If you can imagine families logging on, sitting on the couch together over cereal, over pancakes, and just engaging in conversation about books and literacy. It was, it's a pretty amazing thing. I'm very grateful because we had principals on, Dr. Kellogg and Dr. Hopkins attend every year as well. So it's, um, a really powerful thing. Told you, don't you think that was quite a slide? Thank you.
So, moving forward in our equity work, some of the things that we were not able to get to this year, just because of COVID and the, um, you know, just the delay and due to staffing shortages, we were not able to do our professional equity learning with our operations department. And so that is something that we are looking forward to doing as we enter into the next academic year. Educational equity will integrate LGBTQIA+ into our equity efforts for next year. Equity facilitators, we're planning a retreat in June because we know that we need a little additional support and education around new topics that are gonna be happening, and so we're gonna do that work next year, well, in June with our equity facilitators. And that ends our presentation. Are there any questions?
Well, I just wanted to follow up real quick on, thank you for this fantastic work and presentation. Just a quick question, something you just said at the end. You talked about including LGBTQIA+ into equity work next year. I'm just wondering how you're thinking that might change the composition of teams? Or are you looking for new students to join the group? Are we that far in that work yet? Just thinking about the people involved and who can serve speak.
Right. So, the plan as of today is we have made arrangements with Kaleidoscope, which is a community organization that focuses on youth and gender and LGBTQ. And so they have agreed to work with us and also the board. So, they will be working with us starting in June to come to our equity facilitators training, and then we will also have them present at our administrators for all of our principals. And then we're also asking them to come to our WE Day, our Westerville Educator Day. So, right now, what we're looking to do is to provide educational learning for our staff. That's what we're looking to do right now, because all of our staff will support our students. And so we want them to be knowledgeable about how to support our staff, our students.
Okay.
I'll just say thank you.
You're welcome.
Basically along the same line, so thank you for all your work.
I don't, don't have a question, but do would like to also thank, thank you, Ms. Reeves, Ms. Reeves, thank you both for all of the hard work that I know goes into this area. Also would like to just commend you on the framework that you have established for our equity work, because it is, uh, two of the highlights, I believe, of it. Number one, it's inclusive, so it allows for the inclusion of a number of different pop- populations across our, across our district. So I, I really want to applaud you for that. And also applaud you for including a budgetary aspect to this, because I believe that demonstrates the district's commitment to this work. You can always tell what a district is serious about, because there's money behind it and there are, uh, there's personnel behind it. And so I'm excited to see that we have both included in this framework. So, thank you both very, very much for all that you do. Also wanna thank all of the volunteers and staff that work along with you in our buildings and at the district level on a day-to-day basis for all of the hard work they do.
Well, thank you, thank you. And it has been beneficial to have equity facilitators who are supplemental on a supplemental contract, so that has been definitely helpful, because now we're doing K-12, right? And so I was one person in the trenches, and so it's definitely helpful to have additional people in buildings doing the work, right? To make sure that it continues, in addition to the equity funds that they're able to work within their building. So, thank you.
I do have a couple of questions. I'm wondering if, for the benefit of the people here and the people who watch the board meeting, if you could give a couple examples of building-level goals and priorities?
So, one of the building-level goals, let's say for elementary. So, with our elementary buildings, this was their first year, really diving into equity work, because for me, I was mainly in secondary for the duration, pretty much for my eight years, for my seven years, since this is my eighth year. And so for elementary buildings, it was really about professional development and professional learning around equity, in addition to making sure that they had diverse books in their, in their libraries. Some of the, some of the buildings wanted to go do library audits, where they wanted to see if there were inclusive materials in our libraries, right? And so a lot of the work kinda stemmed there on books in the elementary area. In middle school, most of them wanted to get students involved in the work. And so as we had on one of our slides, one of the things they wanted to do was to create equity student groups, to hear student voices. That was some of the work in their professional learning. As far as our educators, if you remember the Be the Change work, there was some scenarios there where student voice was given around the Dear Westerville or Dear Olentangie, whatever the schools were during 2020. And so what we wanted to do is create opportunities for student voice in our buildings. So for an example, at Heritage Middle School, they created an Equity Student Council. And with the council, they have a collective group of students that looks and mirrors their student population. And during the times that the, the equity facilitator, one of their school counselors, their assistant principal, created and facilitated the group presentation so they can build their knowledge base on what equity looks like in their building, how they serve all of their students. So, I think it was in February, they, the team worked together to help with their February program, but not only that, they had little wristbands that said, I think it said like, equity is excellence and excelling, or something like that. And then they also had Equity Council, and they distributed it to all of their students in their buildings. And so they're able to talk about what equity is and what it looks like in their building. So that's what we did in our middle schools. They had other goals that they wanted, but that was one of the highlights. And so for an example, in our high schools, one of the things that they wanted to do, especially at North, was they have a goal to ensure that our students, particularly our black student, and their academic achievement is addressed. And so we're working really closely with them in regards to creating programs so that students can see themselves, and when they see themselves and they see that they belong, then we believe that they're able to achieve, right? But we're also working with their staff in regards to, how do we work with all of our students in our building to make sure that we're not only just seeing them as individuals in the building, but we're also helping support their academics? And so that was a really big shift, because we wanted to see what their academics was looking like, but then also how do we support them? And so that was some of the work that we're doing, elementary, middle, and high school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have any questions, just a huge thank you to both of you and your teams and anyone involved. So thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, sorry.
I'm so sorry, I had a question that popped into my head. I know you and I've talked about how you measure how we're doing. I don't know if you could talk just a little bit, high level of how you measure how we're moving along?
Sure. So, a part of the work that we did in year one was, we were working to, well, we worked with Ohio State College of Education and created the modules for Be the Change, right? And so within the modules, we worked, Dr. Kellogg kinda worked with me and Dr. Luthy with the College of Education, to make sure that we were asking the right questions on a survey. And also what they did was a pre and a post-survey, and so they created it. I gave the questions to Dr. Kellogg to make sure that we were asking the right questions. And once we did that, then our staff was able to, before they even started Be the Change, we wanted to see what their knowledge level was around equity, diversity and inclusion, right? Where our students are concerned. So, each person, before they began the professional learning opportunity with Be the Change, they took the survey, so that was the pre-survey. And then when they're finished with the educational learning opportunity, Be the Change, then they take the post-survey. And so what that allows us to do, to see if there's any gaps or if there's been any growth in the learning. And so once we understand that there has been growth and movement, mindset shifts, you know, changes for understanding around diversity, equity, inclusion, then we can say, oh, okay, we see that this particular staff has increased their knowledge and their learning around equity, or we understand that there may be some gaps. And where there are gaps, then we understand we need to provide additional professional learning for them. And so that's how we're measuring, is because we have a pre and a post-survey, and then we're be, we're able to see if there are any gaps or if there are any areas that we're, where we are excelling.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate all the work you both are doing.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to 5.2, we have a superintendent's report.
Just a thank you to Cynthia and Tree for being here this evening and sharing the work. It's a, they quietly just go about and get things done, and there's a lot of people that are now engaged and really proud of that, the, the efforts that are going and the work that they're doing. So I thank them for being here this evening for what they're doing. So, President Davidson, members of the board, this tonight, I'm gonna provide an update from the administrative team regarding our efforts to move forward with the goal of expanding the magnet program. So this evening, I'm gonna present the, the, our, our efforts to expand and, and the transition to do that. So, the, the goals of, of the expansion really center around three major things. One was to expand the current math-science program. We've looked at those numbers, we've seen the demand. We also know that the current configuration of single strands, the isolation of the world cultures from other magnet strands is part of what we're looking at, is part of that expansion. Want to maximize facilities capacity, we have some classroom spaces that was available. And, and a lot of discussion about updating the program purpose and goals as we move forward, just a good time to refresh that. Just a reminder, current state, those who are familiar with the programs know what we have right now at Emerson, which is actually the smaller of the two buildings, but actually has more classrooms, classroom space taken up right now. The five, grade one through five classes for world cultures. Just a reminder, those students admitted via the annual lottery. And then it also has the six classes of the self-contained gifted program. That's two sections at each grade level, three, four, and five. Those students are admitted based on a standardized test score. So those eleven classrooms are what fill up the Emerson building at this point. There we go. Hanby, Hanby, which is actually a larger building, is under capacity. It has five classrooms of the math-science strand, again, students admitted by lottery, and five classes of the fine arts strand, admitted by lottery. So, ten total classrooms there, eleven total classrooms at Emerson, some available space at Hanby. So that's what we're working with from a resource perspective. So here's layout of the plan. Took into consideration, we met with teachers, principals, had email conversations with parents as, as this was unfolding to look at this. And we tried to, to balance all those needs and look at this from a lot of perspectives to make sure that we, we could, as lea- as least disruption as possible and move as quickly as possible to keep the program as robust as possible. So here's where we're at, I'm gonna point out this way. So over here, you see current world cultures. There's really no change, it remains at Emerson. We'll fill the first-grade seats with world culture applicants, again, via lottery. Second, third, fourth, and fifth grade, if there are seats available, we'll lottery those, but that really, really no change to the world culture strand. The, the goal was to move the fine arts strand over to the world cultures building over at Emerson, makes sense in a humanities umbrella in general. So here's how we plan on filling that. Grade one, just like we would in the other year, the grade one class will be filled by fine arts applicants. This will really be, the new section will be really, uh, it's, the new section will now be at Emerson as we start building that out. And that will be a new teacher. I'll touch on that a little bit when I talk about Hanby, why that's the new teacher. So that's kind of traditional model, other than the new teacher, it's the same old, fill this by fine arts applicants through the lottery. Second and third grade is a little bit different how we envision filling this. We had a lot of feedback from families that are currently in Hanby, fine arts strand, grades one and two. And some of their expressed concerns about changing buildings and their attachment to the current program there. So we've made accommodations for that. What we would, uh, what we're planning on doing is, the grade two and grade three fine arts classes at Emerson will be filled combination. Those students currently at Hanby in grade one and in grade two will be offered the opportunity to either remain at Hanby as part of that school in grade two and grade three, or to move to Emerson as part of the fine arts program. So those, those sections will be partially filled by current Hanby students who opt to move, and then we'll backfill the rest with fine arts applicants as we've done in the past. I call that a new section at Emerson, there'll be a new teacher. I'll show that, why that is when I get to Hanby, same thing in grade three. So that'll give us eight classrooms full at Emerson next year. Grade four and grade five, those will be new in twenty-four and in twenty, in twenty-five. Really, I think, as we'll see at the end of this, we're gonna have a magnet advisor committee. I think the question of, do we do both sections in the second year? Or do we do one and then one, will be part of the, the feedback from that committee moving forward. So this will start to round out and give an opportunity for these eight classrooms full of teachers to start working together and define what this building will be like in the future in terms of fine arts, and we'll see that come out of the committee. So that's the Hanby plan, excuse me, the Emerson plan. Fine arts will be shifting over there, we'll fill that with those students who wanna come from Hanby, and then we'll backfill the rest with new applicants. Gives us eight sections. At Hanby, you're gonna see similar kind of, kind of pattern. Here's the traditional one-strand of math-science that we have. Grade one filled with mag- math-science applicants. The additional section of, of grade one math-science will also be filled by applicants. You notice in grades one, two, and three, it says current teacher remains. Several, as we talk to Hanby teachers and as we look at our WA contract, these teachers are assigned to Hanby, they'll remain in Hanby. They are always, like any teacher in the district, eligible to apply for another position if they wanted to do that and would give them preferential, give them the opportunity to interview. But as, as it stands, they would remain there in those classes and become part of the Hanby program as it moves forward, if that's what they choose. Second and third grade, same concept as I said with Emerson. Those students that are currently in grades one and grades two in the fine arts strand will be given the option to either remain at Hanby and be part of the evolution of that program or move to Emerson. So, depending on the number of students who opt to move to Emerson, the rest of that will be backfilled with math-science applicants as we expand the math-science program. And current teachers in first, second, and third grade at this point would remain. Grade four and grade five would remain for next year. And again, part of the transition planning is we go into next year about how do we transition that in the next two years. So, teachers have options to stay where they're at. Students in the program have options to stay where they're at. In order to make room for all that, we do need to move the self-contained gifted program. In order to make room at Emerson, right now, there's 11, 11 classes over there. We need to make room. So, this would move the six, we would move all six self-contained classes and the teachers and the students from Emerson to Hanby, grades three, four, and five. That'll create the space we need at Emerson. Don't like moving people. It's always a disruption. It always causes some concern. I understand that and I appreciate that. This one has a little bit positive flavor to it, at least in some perspectives. In that, the whole quarter is moving. It's all the students who've been together. It's the teachers they're accustomed to. The venue changes to, from Emerson to Hanby. And I know that's a disruption. Similar to the disruption we're seeing, changes in building location for lots of our students next year. This is what allows us to go at this pace. It was important to us to make sure that when we ended this change going into next year, there was a balance between enrollment at both buildings because we have the shared staff for our elective offerings that are, not elective offerings, or special offerings that are there. So, there needs to be balance in order to make that schedule work. This helps. So, that would be the plan for the self-contained gifted program. Important part of this is establishing a magnet review committee. This would be a superintendent's committee. Really, we want to reengage the communities of both schools in talking about program definitions, program goals, and finishing out the final transition as we move this thing forward. I think there's lots of conversations. We know that over time at, at Hanby, the two strands have kind of morphed into this singular STEAM concept. That may be where they end up. Let them have that conversation. See similar kinds of pairings between the gifted at Emerson and the world cultures. We see all those opportunities coming. And giving those buildings and the communities there the opportunity to find that for us and bring that forward next year. Want to kind of take a look at pros and cons, at least as our team looked at it. Really, really minimizes disruptions in terms of magnet families and their moves. Doesn't require the magnet teachers to move. It does distribute our enrollment more effectively across the two schools. Gives the staff and the school communities that are attached there enough people, enough energy to start building on that, what do we want to be? Does meet our goal of expanding the seats available in math-science. Fills the capacity of both those buildings. We have a net gain of 125 seats in the magnet program. That's a good thing. There are cons. Certainly, they're moving the gifted teacher and their students. Changes venue for those, for those adults and those kids as well. We, we know that that, that is something that's on their minds. And the current fine arts strand, I think, has some transition pieces going on as some go to world cultures over at Emerson and some opt to stay at Hanby. But I think they also get to participate in the definition of what that will look like for the collective school population there in the future. Timelines. Some of this is tightly compressed. I understand that. We've already worked on communications. But we've tried to pace this out to give people enough time to make decisions. So, we have our presentation of the plan tonight. We have prepared communication that'll go out tomorrow. There's two pieces to this. One will be to all elementary families. That reminds, that summarizes the transition plan I just described. It reminds them that the lottery closes April 18th. So, they still have from now to April 18th. If they have not entered the lottery and they're interested, or they have entered and they want to make a change, they have time to do that between now and April 18th. There'll be a targeted communication to grade one and two Hanby fine arts families that explains their option to either stay at Hanby or go to Emerson. And we give them a timeline of April 22nd. So, we give them plenty of time to consider which direction they'd like to go. Our two principals, Chris and Megan at the magnets, have already scheduled additional open houses. This is close. I understand that. There's an open house at Emerson tomorrow from 5:36. An open house at Hanby from 6:00 to 7:00. I talked to both principals about that. This is a tight timeline, doesn't fit everybody's needs. They welcome anyone who wants to email or contact them. If that doesn't work and they want to come spend some time and visit the program, they can do that. We'll accommodate that. Lottery closes on the 18th. 22nd will close out the requests for those at Hanby if they want to stay. We anticipate doing the lottery on or about April 2019. Lottery notification going on or about May 2nd. And deadline for those families that are offered a seat at the magnets to respond by May 18th, so we can build out those schedules. We'll post the three positions at, at Emerson this week, so we can begin moving forward with the hiring process as well with our staff. Either I've hit the wrong button or I've killed the battery. Any questions?
I do. A couple of questions, a couple of comments. Dr. Kellogg? If we could be very clear, when we communicate with the Hanby families about their option to stay, I've heard a little confusion about what that actually means from families. They need to know, if they stay, the strand they're in. So, I think that's an important communication piece. I want to be sure that is made. You know, this coming school year is going to see a lot of changes across the district. And this is one that, in a lot of ways, exemplifies the changes that we're seeing across the district. And it is hard for a lot of families to make those changes. I, I think the board probably remembers that I was, have been concerned about moving to make this change now. I'm still concerned because I still would like to have seen the magnet review committee before the shift. However, even though I am very concerned about it, I fully understand what you're trying to do in the context of not only these two buildings and the programs within them, but also within the context of the district as a whole. And that is important to handle, manage, approach, deal with in a way that conducts the changes in as most compassionate a way as can be done. At the same time, we are doing the necessary assignments across buildings that are going to happen. And moving to expand the magnet at this point in time assists with that in some ways. Not large ways, but in some ways, as we look at the numbers in some of our schools, in some ways. That said, I, I do still have concerns and you know that. I've shared that with you. I've bothered you about it over and over and over again. And I appreciate the time that you have spent with me. I also appreciate the time you spent with me at Hanby, taking me, meeting me over there. And we took up most of Megan's afternoon as we went through the classrooms and talked about the possibilities for those students who are moving over there. Particularly as, you know, as we were talking with Megan about moving the gifted program into Hanby with the strand that's already there. And as the art strand phases out of Hanby, what does that mean? What could that be like? And I could see you were thinking and Megan was thinking as well. And I wondered if you have any thoughts about how we might be planning to make the move as successful as possible for staff and students?
First and foremost, what'll make this work and why I'm confident in it is the staff and the principals. They, when we talked with both principals about these changes initially, their first reaction was excitement of the opportunity to do something that we had recognized. And we had talked about this with the board before. We all recognized that there were some weaknesses in the magnet program, definition, purpose, et cetera. We really want to give it a, a little bit of juice, so to speak, right? Spruce it up and, and, and make it a little more solid. And they, that's been on their minds. And they've been talking to Barb Wallace and myself and Dr. Hopkins and his role about that opportunity. So, their initial response was really, really positive, really, really excited. And immediately, their head started spinning with the possibilities of how we could do this. What could it look like? And had to slow them down or remind them that it's, you know, great leaders they are, we got to bring other people in that conversation. So, that's number one. Number two, some of the strongest teachers we have in the district are at those buildings and have done wonderful work with kids. That's why many of our families are so committed to those buildings is because of the teachers, because of those principals. And I think in the end, that's going to be the winning formula. As well as giving those school communities the opportunity to bring forward to us what they want to be. For a long time, the magnets has functioned more of a, this is what the district says they are and make it work. And I think this is an opportunity for them to own the space and own the definition. So, I, I think that's exciting. So, those staff, those students are going to embrace each other. There'll be some initial, let's get to know each other. Always a great learning opportunity for people. And I think that's where the magnets is going to be. The sooner I'm out of the way of what they're doing and move them forward, the better off I think they're going to be.
One last thing. In the magnet review committee, I understand and agree with what you were saying about ownership. But I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that these are district schools. And as such, what is decided as regards what the magnets will be must also take into account where we're going, what we do, who we are as a district.
Yeah, well, as with many things in that joint relationship district building, we'll provide some parameters to help give them a framework to work from. I don't think, based on preliminary conversations with people and formal conversations, it's been going on for years, these conversations. I think, I think people see a pretty clear path to something that's going to satisfy those who are part of the program, those who want to be part of the program in the future and what we're looking for as a governance team, in particular, what the board's looking for, creating as part of the school district. So, I, I think we get over this speed bump, get into role, and we're going to be okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the, the, I know how much thought has gone into making this the least disruptive change as possible. That doesn't mean it's not disruptive for some people more than others. And so, I'm just thinking through some of those and just, some of these are questions. Some of them are just things for us all to think about. The first one I just wanted to mention is the parent-teacher organizations at these buildings are going to be, you know, they might think they have their leadership in place for next year, but people are going to get moved around. So, I just want to say that out loud and recognize that that will be the case and see how can we support those organizations as they have people, you know, maybe walking to opposite ends of Vine Street now. So, that's one piece. What sort of supports can we give to the parent organizations, parent-teacher organizations? I wanted to also follow up on Dr. Nestor Baker mentioning, you know, these are district schools. And so, there are best practices all over our district, right? In different realms. But these are places where, you know, whatever the programs become, whether it's some kind of humanities-centered, probably in STEM or STEAM-centered, to really think about what's the mechanism for using them as sort of incubators or, you know, latching onto those best practices that might be replicated across the district or at least shared across the district that people can pick up on if they would like to, other educators? So, just really want to encourage us to think about that. How can these be places that help inform these types of focuses across the district for other educators? I'm thinking a lot about gifted teachers and families who get picked up and moved wholesale down Vine Street. And so, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this question, but just want to ask. So, we're talking about the gifted teachers will all move, but there will be open positions at Emerson. If any of those teachers wanted to apply for those roles, right? Allegiances to that community in that building, then that's something that could happen.
It, it needs to be done in the context of our WA agreement. But yes, any open position is available to them and other staff, yes.
Okay. And then, I'm thinking about with the magnet review committee too. You know, obviously, we don't quite know what that is yet. Right now, we're, that's the thing that's going to happen. Thinking about program definitions and goals and transition. And also, just want to make sure that as part of that, and I know the Hanby community is going to welcome the gifted program over, but thinking about gifted as part of that, because it's magnet review committee, I just want to, you know, encourage us to include the gifted community in those conversations about developing what happens at the school that they'll be part of. And then, I guess, this is more from a personal and parent side. I've had kids at lots of these schools over the years. And I, I mentioned this once. I try not to bring in my own stuff too much. But as a, as a young person, I went to Hanby for fifth and sixth grade. Gifted self-contained was there at the time. And I just want to encourage the families who are maybe feeling a little angst about moving out of Emerson. Just from very long ago, a great experience for me was that the library was almost an extension of our building. So, when you reach the upper level of elementary and you're maybe reading above grade level, it's really great that the library is two doors down, right? And it really became almost this extension of our learning space. It doesn't hurt that Dairy Queen's in the middle, right? So, if you have to go past Dairy Queen to get to the library, that's okay. But there are some, there are some real benefits to that, I think, for the gifted program at those upper grade levels. And the fact that the facility at Hanby, you know, the playground's smaller and stuff, but our gifted program is that third through fifth grades. They're a little bit towards the upper, you know, they're towards the upper elementary. So, I, I'm, I'm hopeful. I think that those families, those students, the teachers will find some benefits that maybe aren't obvious, you know, right now where everyone's thinking about these changes being made. But I'm really appreciative that we're able to expand the magnet program. I'm thrilled to think about the additional number of seats. And the last thing I promise is those rising second and third graders, there're going to be extra spots open that people aren't expecting, right? So, I, I know that we'll do this, but I just want to encourage us to be as aggressive as we can with getting that news out particularly because families think about magnet lotteries when they have rising first graders and not as much when they have rising second and third graders. So, thank you for the thoughtfulness that's gone into the transition. And I think everyone's going to be fine in the end, but that doesn't mean it won't hurt along the way. So, thanks.
Great comments and questions. Very well done. Thank you for sharing your personal experience. I want to highlight one thing. I think from the last failed levy, this is the last restoration piece that we needed to deal with. What is it?
Yes. And middle school, the restoration of middle school, yeah.
Yep, and we started that already too.
Yep, sure have.
I, I am excited about that. I know a lot of kiddos are moving and it is high anxiety. And anything we can do to help, you know, we want to be there. So, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Kellogg and your team, for doing this. I mean, I appreciate it.
Particularly Barb Wallace, Cheryl Relford, the principals, Chris and Megan, have been wonderful. Paul Hopkins, Scott Dorn, Greg V. Brants. I mean, they've, it was a simple six-slide deck, but behind that was a lot of hours and a lot of wrestling around with things. And to the, to the folks, families that have been emailing us with their thinking and their, and their concerns, if, if we weren't able to give you something that alleviated that, we will be here to help you and hold your hand and take care of your kid throughout the change, which is what we do. And it's, it's an, it's an exciting opportunity, but it, it does present some anxiety for some people. We understand.
Okay. Moving on, 6.1, public comments on agenda items 7.1 through 11.1. We do not have any this evening, which takes us to financials. 7.1, a resolution to approve the purchases in accordance to ORC 5705.41 and Board Policy 6320.
So moved.
Second.
President Davidson, members of the board, thank you. So this is what we call the "then and now" purchase orders. So this is a case where we have a purchase order that's dated after an invoice date. So what we're looking at here is our T-shirts that were printed for, well, made, printed, however they do T-shirts, for the DC trip for Genoa Middle School. And this was just a case of timing with the order being placed and how the invoice was dated, the money was budgeted, out of the student account and all that. So I would recommend approval so we can have it paid before they go on the DC trip.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Moving on to the personnel consent agenda, 8.1 through 8.15, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And that brings us to Scott Reeves. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you and good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg and Mrs. Marshall. I would like to present to you for your consideration tonight's Personnel Consent Agenda. The items brought in tonight's agenda mostly represent our regular action items with regard to resignations, hirings, changes of assignment, and contract status changes. There are a few items, however, to be noted in tonight's agenda. Tonight, we are asking the board to consider and approve the following. We have 20 classified resignations before the board this evening, representing mostly aides and classified substitutes. Partially offsetting those resignations, we are asking the board to approve the employment of 14 classified positions. We have six teaching and one administrative resignation for the board to approve. So far, one of those teaching positions have long been filled, two are posted, and one has been filled by a reassigned teacher. We have six classified and seven licensed changes of assignments within the district. We have eight classified contract status changes and one administrative. And with that administrative change, I'd like to thank Point View Assistant Principal Sherry Chafin, who has done an outstanding job as the interim principal of Robert Frost Elementary School in the absence of Sarah Burka. We have two teacher hires for the board to consider. And with the board approval, I'd like to welcome Dr. Michael Warren, who will be replacing Rashonda Elder as the Assistant Principal of Huber Ridge Elementary. Dr. Warren comes to us from the Pittsburgh area and we are excited to have him as a member of our team. And lastly, we have four classified and one administrative retirements to consider this evening. Jack Bolt will be retiring from his position with the Transportation Department with 18 years of service to the district. Jaclyn Hopkins will be retiring from her position in the Food Service Department with 13 years of service to the district. Brenda Kopp will be retiring from her position in the Food Service Department with 22 years of service to the district. Kim Malahan will be retiring from her position as secretary with 12 years of service to the district. Kim finishes as the right-hand person to Westerville A.D., Wes Ellafrid, and is well-known for her amazing theater productions that she leads at Westerville North High School. Barb Wallace will be retiring, and it says 29 years on the agenda, it's with 30 years of service to the district. Barb has served as a teacher, a principal, director of special education, and it has been my personal honor to serve alongside her as she served as the executive director of elementary. So collectively, these wonderful, wonderful employees have served the district for 95 years. That would take us way back to 1927. And in that year, in his plane, the Spirit of St. Louis, aviator Charles Lindbergh made the first solo, non-stop, transatlantic flight traveling from New York City to London, England. The Academy of Motion Picture of Arts and Sciences was founded, which culminated in an annual award ceremony to honor the year's best films, directors, and male and female actors. And every year since, the Academy Awards have been a big hit. The all-black Harlem Globetrotters basketball team played their first-ever game. Duke Ellington and his orchestra made their historic run performing at the famed Cotton Club. A little closer to home here in Columbus, the 555-foot tower, then known as the American Insurance Union Citadel, now known as the Leveque Tower, opened as the fifth tallest building in the world, the tallest between New York and Chicago. And almost 100 years later, it is still the city's most iconic and recognizable building. And finally, the experts at MGM Studios told animator Walt Disney that because women would be terrified of a giant mouse on the screen, his idea of Mickey Mouse would never work. And with that, any questions from the board?
Well done. Hearing none.
Thank you.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Thank you. Old Business, 9.1, final reading policy 6110, grant funds, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments here? Hearing none.
I did just want to make a comment, that we did make the revision that we discussed, and so I didn't hear from anyone else, so we're good with the... Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 9.2, final reading policy 6114, cost principles, spending federal funds, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions here? Hearing none.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 9.3, final reading 6325, procurement, federal grant funds, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions here? Hearing none. Ms. Marshall?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 9.4, final reading, policy 6423, use of credit cards, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments here? Hearing none.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. New Business, 10.1, first reading policy 2271, college credit plus program, and we'd like to welcome Ann Baldwin.
Hi, good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Mrs. Marshall. This evening, we have a policy update that, for a college credit plus, that has been revised to include the provision of state law that requires male students who are 18 years of older to register with the Selective Service System in order to participate in the college credit plus program. This revised policy reflects current Ohio law and is recommended to be adopted to maintain accurate policies. This revision has been shared with families in previous college credit plus presentations and has been a past practice for our students. And if the college will initially reach out to the student if they don't have that number on file, and then we can assist our college partners if they need that information from our students.
If you have any questions? Hearing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Up next, 10.2, first reading policy 2370.1, blended learning, and welcome, Dr. Hopkins.
Thank you. Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Mrs. Marshall. The revision to policy 2370.01, blended learning, adds an additional component to what constitutes blended learning. The new definition adds and includes non-computer-based learning opportunities to the current definition. Previously, the definition only included online learning. This revision aligns our blended learning programs, should they ever be offered, to state guidelines. And it's recommended to approve these revisions and to adopt them to maintain accurate policies. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Hearing none, thank you. Recommended action, standing business, 11.1, resolution approving loose furnishings packages, package for Westerville South High School, Phase Four, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And Mr. Dorn?
Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Altman, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg and Ms. Marshall. The loose furnishings package is in preparation for the opening of South's fourth phase of renovations that is currently under construction. Phase Four includes the first-floor South Academic Wing and the second-floor Media Center. In general, the scope of work includes all-new furniture for five classrooms, new teacher desks and bookcases for six classrooms, new teacher desks for the 10 science classrooms, new furniture for one project-based learning area and one small group room, new computer tables with chairs for the media center, and furniture for the new Satellite Cafe located at the entrance of the media center. Bids were solicited in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code on February 24th, and we received two bids that were publicly read on March 24th. The lowest responsible bid was submitted by Zimmerman School Equipment in the amount of $180,786.44. This is actually slightly over Triad's line item estimate for furniture, but within the overall budget for Phase Four. The work area will be available for furniture installation starting on July 25th and by substantial completion by August 8th of this school year, just in time for the start of classes. It is being recommended that the board accept Zimmerman School Equipment's bid for Phase Four's loose furnishing package at Westerville South High School.
I do have one quick question, because I know it's come up in previous projects. So as far as any loose furnishings that we're not going to continue to use in the building, right, that we're retiring, what happens to those?
Well, when we went through South at the beginning of this project, we identified the amount of furniture that we could reuse and came up with a percentage. Some of the furniture that we determined that we were going to reuse will stay at South, but some has been delivered to other buildings to be used in those buildings. But I think if you're asking the question about when it gets to its end of its useful life, we really keep furniture way too long. It is not really something that then becomes something somebody else is going to want. We have had those, we've put out some teacher desks, things like that, and we've had some community members stop by and pick those up before our waste hauler was able to get to those. But in general, they're going to, an infill.
Yeah, thanks for walking through that, because actually it was both pieces. I wanted people to know, we don't just take everything that was used before and, you know, toss it out. There is a process of discerning what we're going to hold on to and where it is best served, and then there is a point at which it needs to be let go. So, yeah, thanks.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Hearing none.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 11.2, a resolution approving alternate power supply, granting rate of entry and consent for collection of American Tower Company cell tower. Mr. Dorn again.
Yes, this resolution pertains to the American Tower Company cell tower located between the stadium at Westerville South High School and the transportation building. Approval of this resolution will allow the American Tower Company to connect new separately metered electrical supply to the tower. It will also provide the approval for DISH to become a co-locator on the tower that currently provides service for AT&amp;T, and it will bring resolution to the existing electrical service issues between the district and American Tower Company. It is being recommended that the board approve this resolution this evening.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments here? Hearing none, thank you.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 11.3, 2022 and 2023 student fee schedule, Dr. Hopkins, welcome. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall, I'm submitting for your consideration the student fee schedule for the 2022-23 school year. There are a few changes to this year's schedule that I wanted to bring to your attention. First of all, every year, we use state government information to adjust the annual income guidelines for annual all-day kindergarten tuition. Also like to note that the test fees for both AP and IB tests have raised just a little bit. And we have also noted that the school campus parking permit is $15 a semester and $30 a school year. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Hi, I know earlier I asked this question, and I know that you and I have gone back and forth about it a little bit, but I think it would be really good, and I think you're intending to do so, but to just really be specific about the cap and what the fee is capping, so in my, I'm not being very articulate, I'm sorry, pay-to-play and also what is booster?
Correct.
Just so I know, I had that question to you, where what is considered booster fee and what's considered a pay-to-play?
Right, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. The pay-to-participate programs is primarily for athletic programs. I believe it was a few years ago when some of our organizations and activities, such as marching band, for example, that reduced that. So the family cap is for any of those activities, like I said, predominantly, if not exclusively, athletic programs, that's capped at a family amount, I believe it's $300 a year. And we're going to be very specific about that. There are some courses in our academic planning guide, especially at our secondary level, that do include some additional fees, such as marching band. And what we're going to do is we're going to go back and make sure it's really clearly articulated which of these are required course fees, as opposed to which of these are potential fees to the booster group to help support those programs. So thank you.
I really appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick comment. I appreciate the efforts to keep the fees from going up significantly. It's long been a concern of mine, the level of fees that people need to pay, particularly those who don't qualify for assistance, it's tough for families. So I appreciate the efforts to keep those from exploding.
Indeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Up next, we have public comments, and we have one tonight. I'd like to welcome Casey Walco, did I say that correctly, to the podium?
Hi, I have a little cold. My name's Casey Walco, and I have a third-grade student in Emerson. He's a third grader in the gifted classroom, and he was in the World Cultures Program for first and second grade. He has a younger brother that's in kindergarten that's anxiously awaiting to get into Emerson for first grade next year. I'm here to speak to changes coming to the Hanby and Emerson Magnet and Gifted Programs. I'm not against change at all, but I am for thoughtful, methodical change, and I feel like that's not happening here. Despite what's been said tonight about parents being involved and lots of thought going into this and lots of different parties being involved in these decisions, that's just not been the case. I'm concerned about the timing, how these decisions were made and communicated, and their impact on the gifted program in particular. I don't understand why parents have not been informed, let alone consulted, along the way. And I'm not the only person that feels this way. I'm just the only person that's talking tonight. A lot of people didn't even realize this was happening because we just found out about it two weeks ago, right, as people are going on spring break the night before the Magnet Teachers were also informed just a few weeks ago, from what I understand, and I would have also liked to have seen the board vote on a big change like this. I feel like this is a big change that shouldn't just be, we shouldn't just be told that this is happening. There should be some involvement across the school community. So I'd like for you to please reconsider. It sounds like maybe that won't happen, but I'd love for you to reconsider making your final transition plan tonight. I'd like for you to not make extreme changes like moving kids this fall, so close to the end of the year. I think it makes a big difference, especially to the gifted kids. I'd love the idea that you're creating a team. I'd love to create a team representing the three magnet strands and the gifted program and let the parents, the teachers, administrators, and the staff work together to create thoughtful, timely, and efficient short and long-term plans. I would like for you to think about details that need not be rushed or overdone. I'm not really sure, I would like for you to ask yourselves what's really driving this hasty decision. I don't know if it's a promise from the levy, if it's funding that's going away, if it's some other reason, but is it really what's best for our children who are in these programs right now? The current gifted kids are taking the hit from these changes, and they've been essentially given no consideration or options at all. We make big decisions like this, when we make a big decision... We make big decisions like this, when we make big decisions like this, I feel like we should be given a year in advance notice, or at least in the fall, or maybe even just right before the Magnet Lottery opened up for applications. It seems like it's not well thought out, and that's been demonstrated, by the way, it's been communicated or not communicated to the people that it will involve. If programs must change buildings, phase moves in and out by grade for minimal impact to current third and fourth grade students, including the gifted students, not just the ones at Hanby, who are proud of their school, please add new Magnet classes slowly, piloting one or two in their current building, and then learning from that experience before adding or moving more. Please take into account the many nuances of the gifted children who we aim to serve. Anxiety is a common struggle for gifted kids, as demonstrated by some of the many presentations that the gifted specialists have given throughout the year, yet the way that we're rolling this out is giving kids more anxiety, and it's giving the parents anxiety too. After the last two years, we've had a lot of anxiety, and as we know, the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. The PTA is responsible for many activities and events that make Emerson special. Recent volunteer restrictions mean parent representation is down. Emerson's PTA this year is made up mostly of fifth-grade parents and gifted parents. As was mentioned earlier, those leadership positions are being decided now, and we're rushing into this at the end of a school year for no apparent reason to me. Arts and World Cultures sound like a great combination, but the marriage of World Cultures and giftedness is another aspect of what makes Emerson magical, and I worry that gifted curriculum will be diluted over time and lose its World Cultures focus. And schools are just finally getting back to normal. Our kids and the families and the teachers that support them have made it through two years straight of nonstop change and ambiguity and stress, so let's not add to their mental health burden if we don't really need to, especially when the pandemic and further COVID impacts are not necessarily over. I know you said you have confidence in the teachers and the staff at Emerson and at Hanby, but those are the folks who've made all this work these last two years. They've been through a lot already. Why are we rushing to do this at the end of the year and expecting them to fix it for us? I would ask you again to involve impacted parents and teachers in these conversations sooner, or at all, and then truly utilize our input moving forward. Please also think more intentionally about how changes are communicated, taking into account all audiences, the timing, and how such announcements filter down to our kids. We want to work together with you, and I hope that you'll let us do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and spending your evening with us. We appreciate it. Moving on to Board comments, 13.1. Does anyone like to go?
I would just like to mention that coming up on April 20th, we will host our, the name just left my head, Westerville Prepared. Thank you, Ms. Marshall. It's a partnership, a collaboration between Westerville City Schools, the City of Westerville, the Westerville Area Chamber of Commerce, the Westerville Library, Otterbine University, Columbus State Community College, Dawson Careers, and Coda. It's going to be held at the Point. There will be breakout sessions, and parents, families are certainly encouraged to attend. Additional information regarding the event can be found on the district's website. Other than that, I'd like to congratulate and well, and thank all of our retirees that were announced this evening. We want to thank them for their many years of committed service to our district, to our families, and students. They have certainly made a tremendous impact on more lives than they will probably ever realize. So want to thank them, want to congratulate again all of our athletes that were recognized this evening, Ms. Chafin that was recognized for her community service this evening, and again, our finance team, Ms. Marshall and your team, for the continued outstanding and excellent work that you all are doing. That's it.
I also want to congratulate Nicole and her team. I think that Auditor Faber made it pretty clear how remarkable the achievement is. It is incredible to consider that an organization of this complexity has managed to hit that mark of perfection year after year after year. It is not something that I take for granted, it's not something I think any of us take for granted, and it is utterly, remarkable is the only word I can come up with. It is fantastic. It is an achievement beyond what I think any of our peers have managed to achieve. And I thank you for doing what needs to be done to keep the complexity in some way manageable for that level of both transparency and excellence. So thank you to you and your team. I also want to mention Jack Boeck, and Jaclyn Hopkins, and Brenda Kopp, and Kim Malahan, and Barbara Wallace. This tells you quite a bit about me, I guess. Kim Malahan and I went to school together at Westerville South and did theater stuff together. Kim has been such an incredible gift to theater in this particular district, and has been an incredible gift to many student lives, as has everyone who is retiring tonight. I call out Kim just because I remember her when I couldn't figure out how she got her hair to be so full, and I couldn't make mine do it many, many years ago, when that's all I was worried about. I also want to call out Barbara Wallace. Barbara and I got involved in this district at roughly the same time, very close together, and I have always counted on Barbara. She is authentic as they come, she's always been a straight shooter. No one matters more to Barbara than students, and I just have such respect for Barbara Wallace, and I will miss her when she goes immensely, and I will miss her ability to say, "You need to think about," and to tell me what it is I need to be thinking about. I do thank you, Casey, for talking with us this evening. I do share some concerns, as I said. I do believe that our gifted program, our teachers, our families, the way our program is approached by those teachers and families will do well at Hanby, even within the confines of a very quick decision that was made. So I will be watching just as you will be watching and participating, and we will do all that we can do to make the move work for them.
Well, sometimes I ask a lot of questions, and sometimes I have long comments, and tonight my comments really are ditto to what's gone before. And just to reiterate that last point, thanks, Casey, for your words, that on a personal level, it's because I know the teachers, the educators involved in the gifted program, from having children be in the program until last year, that I understand that's the group that's going to be the most impacted, but I also know those educators are amazing and will make this work. So, thank you for coming and sharing your concerns, and, you know, I think putting my trust in them and in our leaders and the kids who are always more resilient than we think they will be, but it's a lot to ask. We know there's been a lot going on the last couple of years, and everybody's resilience wells are like pretty much down to nothing. So, thank you, and again, I just want to shout out the congratulations to those we honored at the beginning of the meeting. I know everyone else has said it, but I can't imagine how many hours all of those young people and their coaches have put in and Ms. Chafin into her work, hours and hours and hours that have gone into, you know, we get to do a little, a moment of recognition, and they're not the only ones. There are young people all over this district who really dedicate their hearts and souls to things. Some of them get to come in front of the Board and be honored, and others, that doesn't happen for. But I just want to honor that lots of young people put in lots of wonderful work in this district towards many different ends, and it's always special when we get to invite a few of them here.
Well, I also would say ditto to what's been said. Congratulations to the students, that's really inspiring, their coaches, and the finance team. Nicole, the way you break down numbers is like no other, so thank you for all that you're doing. And to all the retirees, I really appreciate your comments, Casey, and all the parents that have reached out. I know there were some amazing gifted teachers here tonight. My daughter went through the gifted program too. I know that there's a lot of concern and worry and sadness, but I think there's really a lot of opportunity too, and I'm not discrediting the concern. So I'll be watching too, and I'm excited about the opportunity. I think, well, I'm excited about the opportunity. I did want to give a few legislative updates. As we know that, I've talked about House Bill 126 in the past. It was passed by the Ohio General Assembly, unfortunately, and it's on its way to the Governor for signature. Aside from the enormous amount of bureaucracy this bill adds to us, and it's a lot, we expect there to be a significant loss in revenue. And I thank Nicole for calculating that for us. Estimates based on the cases that we have sent through the Board of Revision, we will lose approximately $275,000 a year in revenue. The district has reached out to the Governor with a viable solution and has asked for him to veto the legislation. I would ask if you feel moved to please call the Governor yourself too and ask him to veto this bill. This past week, actually, I guess it's Monday, my bad, I'm sorry, last week, a really controversial bill was introduced, House Bill 616. It was introduced by Representatives Loicek, a Republican from Bazeta, I'm not sure I'm saying that right, I've actually never even heard of that place, and Representative Jean Schmidt, a Republican from Miami Township, on Monday, April 4th. And this legislation would restrict public schools, STEM schools, charter schools, or private schools that accept students on state scholarships from providing any sexual orientation or gender identity information to grades K through third and students in grades IV through 12. They could not receive materials on sexual orientation or gender identification in any manner that is not age-appropriate or developmentally appropriate for students in accordance with state standards. It has not been referred to a committee ad, but you can call your Senator or Representative, and I'm hearing that it's likely going to move pretty quickly, and unfortunately has a lot of support done at the State House. Then there's House Bill 327, which I have spoken about in the past as well, and this bill would prohibit school districts, community schools, STEM schools, and state agencies from teaching about racism and systemic racism. It's before the House, State, and Local Government Committee, and it had a fifth hearing on February 22nd, and an amendment bill was introduced. I'm not sure how quickly this will move, given that House Bill 616 has blown up, but you can still call your state Senators and Representatives. And then just a quick human resources update, Mr. Scott Reeves has been visiting various colleges and universities, and we've heard about some of that in the past, including Tennessee State, West Virginia State, and Central State, Ohio University on his spring break, I believe, University of Toledo in Bowling Green, and I'm excited to see what comes of this, so thank you for doing so. That's all.
Thank you very much. Just, I'm going to echo all of these Board comments. Just one quick highlight to the recognitions, you know, congratulations to all of you. Nicole and your team, outstanding, not surprised, you guys are absolutely amazing, so thank you for all that you do every single day. I truly appreciate it. So, moving on, 14.1. The Board of Education will meet on Tuesday, April 19th, 2022, for a special session at Westerville North High School for the JEM Awards at 6:00 p.m., and for a regular session on Monday, April 25th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. here at the Early Learning Center. And with that, may I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss matters required to be kept confidential by the state or by federal law?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. So we're going to move into executive session, and then we'll come back to this room to close out our meeting, but thank you all for joining us tonight.
close out our meeting, but thank you all for joining us tonight.